Ladies and councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please stand to receive the town mayor of Biddles, councillor Nigel Yates, the deputy town mayor of Biddles, councillor Adrian Lawton, and the chief officer, Mrs Selahayden. I call upon Reverend Jan Jan Case to offer a prayer for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, and let's pray. Loving and gracious gods, as we gather this evening in service to the people of Biddles, may we approach our world with humility, integrity, and a shared commitment to the common good. Grant us your wisdom in our discussions, clarity in our decisions, and respect for one another even when views may differ. May the choices we make reflect our care for all the residents in our town, especially the vulnerable, the voiceless, and those who face difficulties. Let us never lose sight of the responsibility we carry, nor the opportunity we have to shape a better future together. May this meeting be guided by fairness, compassion, and the spirit of unity for the well-being of Biddles. Now, antitrust generations, even in Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Biddles Town Council. Before we start, I'll just start off with a normal preamble. This meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddles Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision-making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve a lot more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to be recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of the Biddles Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you require more information. Moving on to the agenda, I'd just like to confirm before we start that attendees will be named in the minutes unless otherwise instructed. And if we move on to item ninety-nine in the minute, do we have a representative from the police? We do. Bonjour. Over to you.
That's first one, didn't I? It's phones been. It's not, dog, I'm sorry. So, at the minute, Biddles, we're aware of currently having an issue in the evening for people to be invited to the old rounds on Biddles chatting. We are aware of it. We've seen the CCTV, we've got copies of CCTV, and they're all valid, and that kind of stuff. And we've got an idea, a general idea. I think views have been expressed on the chapter as well. And we are trying to put some control bags in the evening, in those specific times, like it's early, I would think, o'clock, two in the morning, some of them were. So we're not going to try and get around that and manage the situation and find out who the fans are. And so it's been five percent, I think it is. I think that thirteen jobs out of nearly three hundred in the past month. So that's down again, depending on whether we've had the past week or so. I'm surprised it's not all about how things cross. Okay, the minute. And the really caring Sainsbury's, they refused to report. We had one job just three days ago, and before that was forty days. That's when we had called relating to kids from SHB, that kind of shoplifting and what they were, the kids. And we've had some, what sort of words I can use, so it's, so some restrictions, but advice on some of the individual recording issues, preventing them from being in certain places and certain times and that kind of thing, which seems to work up until now. We haven't, like I say, we haven't had any issue reported by Sainsbury's. And we've also had some issues down at the cricket court, whereby some damage because fans have been identified to have been arrested, and that's ongoing investigation as of now, so I can't comment on names or anything like that. But yeah, it's ongoing investigation. We've identified the fans that have been arrested. And, top of my head, anything major wise, but I've got to go on. If anyone wants to chat to me, I know, I'll send out an email for questions, but I'm happy if anyone's not, to let them on, and they won't ask me a question, it's by me.
Okay, just before we start, I mean, Josie just picked up on a point there. We did agree at the last meeting that if anybody had any questions, we'd post them in advance to give the, to give chance for the, the police to actually get a formal response arranged as opposed to, I'll get back to you. And that, that obviously hasn't happened. So it's something which I think is a new council year start in May. I think it'd be respectful if we did take that for all collectively, and I include me in that as well. So it's not certainly not a chance to haxman from, from this seat, but we've, we've got councillor Jones who's, who's got a.
Mr Mayor, this isn't a question, it's a piece of information.
Absolutely, yes.
It's for your information. There were some reports a couple of weeks ago of a trail bike, a motorbike in the Grange Country Park. Yeah, it happened, there was, there were tracks everywhere, so there certainly was one. And it was, it was a funny time of day, really. It was about nine o'clock in the morning, which then all the dog walkers about, which is why he got spotted. The information I want to give to you is if you get that report and you're able to respond, the only way they can get in and out of the country park on a motorbike is off First Road by the quarry, down the steps. You can't get in and out of the bottom because of the gates. Well, they can at the moment because they're doing the work, but they could bother the business centre. So it's just one to put on the diary card and just, you know, go and wait for him there because he's got to come out that way.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other points which want raising at this moment in time? Okay.
If you wanted to ask a question.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I don't, I don't mind if you.
I mean, if I can answer, I'll answer. If I can't, I'll not, yeah.
I'm not saying, with, with what I said, I'm not saying don't ask questions. I'm just saying, you know, let, if, if you want a proper answer, then, you know, we did sort of change to say, let's go to him. Well, if you've got a question, councillors, all you can stand and ask.
Are you working in schools? Are you doing any education?
So we, without even divulging it, at the minute, we'd like school talk, that's all. Everton Fire Brigade is supposed to be Fire Brigade.
Okay.
And I know that we apparently got retained at Bear Middle, so it's not all in principle. We're working out at schools, and we do try and do that, because the fire brigade, nobody likes the water, has a swimming pool and that kind of stuff. We do try and fit it in when we go and do like junior cadets and things like that with the youngest schools. And if we can't fit in for like a meeting at the high school, if there's something we can't do, or we'll get them to send their letters or the teacher will do it in the assembly stores and so, we can try and work in it to try to pick.
Just a point of information, with the Staffordshire Orleans hat on, we are working on a new public space protection order, which will include provisions regarding wild flying as far as, but what we're trying to do is a collegiate approach between the four, the, the three authorities and the water agency who's, who's got an interest in that, and that's Staffordshire Orleans High Peak, it's part of the alliance. The Peak Park and the Staffordshire Wildlife Trust, what we're trying to do is get one common document, so it's, so it's a common standard and it's easy. It's far easier to put in. So we have got a, we have got a public space protection order live at this moment in time, but we want to actually enhance that and get all partners with effectively working to the same standard and the same specification, which would be improvement. Just to conclude this, we've got councillor Smith followed by councillor Hawley.
Just a quick one, really, about the next surgeries that you've got, because I do have a couple of people who've asked me when your next surgeries are, if they want to come and ask for some advice about CCTV.
Yeah, definitely. We do put them on as well, I think, but there is one on Thursday this week at, it'll be ten and eleven. And I can't remember the name of it. It's our, it's your housing.
Yeah, the learning.
Learning.
Learning care, that's the word.
Yeah, learning.
The learning care, ten to eleven this week.
Do you ever do any outside working hours, just?
Um, we do. It's just not as easy to commit to because sometimes the demand from outside, if you hear me. I don't, I don't want to end up setting one up for them to, to shoot off and then people turn up and be like, hang on, please don't, we're going to be here and then dip the spear. So I'll have a word with my boss, her first, and see if we can do so we can. Whoever's on it can't be, if I do one until a little bit later, maybe like two minutes out, like six and seven, something like that. And maybe a little bit later, some of the people working five, six o'clock or anything, it's ideal to, whatever you do in a week.
Thank you. And to finish off, councillor Hawley.
Yeah, I was just sort of wondering, last month, obviously, the thing that was mentioned was the break-ins at Biddles Mall. And I wondered, has it been any progress on those?
Um, as far as I'm aware, it's still ongoing in that period, and we can't really dive over too much if it's, if it's still ongoing. I, I'm not aware of the specifics around the case because I don't know who's, who's the ORC. So I can get back to you, but I, I admit, I, I would have been ongoing, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there's some way you can cut back through Sarah and, I don't know, if there's any progress on that.
I'll follow up with Sarah tomorrow, because we've got another one of these and then later, so I will be able to answer, but I'll sort it out tomorrow.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, lovely. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
I was about to say, like yourself on the way.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. So moving on, item number one hundred is apologies, to receive apologies and approve reasons for absence.
Councillor Hart and councillor Fletcher are the only two that I've got.
And I think at this stage, we should express our hope for councillor Hart, who's currently in hospital, to have a speedy recovery. Well, Rogers would like to.
Mr Mayor, I don't do too many details on YouTube. Miss Hart doesn't, well, would like to send a card and a little bit of a gift, please, through the town council. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do, we can do that. Okay, moving on, declarations of interests, to declare any disclos- disclosable pecuniary interests and dispensations. To declare any other, ah, councillors, all.
Interest and party expenses.
To declare any other disclosable interests. I've got no hands, so we'll move on. The next item is an interesting item, which doesn't come up at town council very often, is to receive three presentations from co-option applicants for East and West Ward vacancies. We've got one vacancy for a councillor in West Ward, we've got one vacancy for a councillor in East Ward. A notice was issued to see if residents wanted to go for an election. Nobody responded to that, so we've enacted our town council co-option policy. I'll go through the, the salient notes of what's going to happen. So I've announced the item on the agenda, and there will be a five-minute, we've got three candidates. There will be a five-minute presentation from each of those candidates, after which there will, will be an opportunity for councillors to clarify some of the points raised, but not particularly question or critique the presentation. And then following that, there will be a confidential session or a decision-making process. Obviously, decision-making and votes by individual councils, as it is, as elections, is done as a private personal matter. So it's only right that that should be held under confidential conditions. So for that, the YouTube filming will be temporarily switched off while that. For the candidates, they will be invited in alphabetical order into the council chamber for their five-minute presentation, after which they can leave the building. Councillors may not discuss the presentation with the candidate, no comment about the presentation style or issues that were included or missing. If something is unclear, and that's my point of clarification, can be sought. The questioning is not part of the five-minute presentation, so it's additional to that. All candidates will be thanked after their presentation, and then, as reiterated, the meeting will become confidential. A further discussion is required, and there has been a resolution that has been approved to have that further discussion during the confidential section. And this should be brief and not draw out, draw on anything the councillors feel or, or do, or do not know about the candidate. And we must deal with the facts, not deal with any P S A. In relationship to the April twenty-five co-option, there are three candidates who expressed an interest in the West Ward and none for the East Ward. The council is not obliged to fill any of the vacancies, but will take steps to advertise for further co-options if that is appropriate after the vote is taken. The mayor will then call for proposals and seconders for his candidate. If a candidate does not receive a proposal second, they will not go forward to the vote. Non-attendance does not discount the candidate. All candidates will need to be proposed and seconded, even if they are not in attendance. Fair to say we've got one non-attendance at the moment. At this moment in time, we've got, can I name the candidate? At this moment in time, we've got one candidate, Derek Stubbs, who unfortunately isn't able to attend and do a presentation tonight. However, his name hasn't been withdrawn, so he will go, go forward in the process. When nominations have been concluded, there will be a show of hands. Each council has one vote. In the event of a tie, the mayor will make the final decision. In effect, the mayor has two votes, but may not choose to support their original vote if they have been swayed by any of the discussion. Okay, so I hope that's clear. So there's no logical reason why we don't start the process. So if we can invite the first candidate to make a five-minute presentation, if you don't.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and the orchestra is silent. Hello, everyone. So thank you for the opportunity to come here and express my desire to become a local councillor. As you probably have already known, that I serve as a Methodist minister here. Since I came here in twenty twenty-three, have to say, Biddles has really become my home. My particular interest, as the, the role of a local councillor, for, for me, would be about two points. Business and culture. And when I was preparing for my moving here, I worked in Nottingham. First of all, I, I didn't know Biddles then because, you know, I'm not English. So, but I've talked to many people in Nottingham, and the majority of them never heard of Biddles either. But since I came here, Biddles has revealed itself as a hidden gem, and I think this beautiful town with, you know, the surrounding natural beauties and the vibrant community life, I think Biddles does in the wider and to be known widely for more people. So my desire is really to help our, uh, Biddles as a town to be widely known and to attract more people and to come here and to really to increase and raise the profile of this beautiful, vibrant town. So first of all, I, I said, I'm interested in business, in our local businesses. And so I hope to support our local businesses and further develop the high street culture. So before I entered full-time ministry, I worked in business sector. And so that experience has shaped much of how I think about local community and development. And my father, before retirement, he worked as a government official, was in charge of business development and attracting investment to our hometown. So growing up, I saw firsthand the importance of supporting local enterprise to strengthen communities. And when I see businesses, I see people, I see people. And being a minister, I have heard some sad stories of business who are failing. And, and the result of it could be a multi-faceted, sorry. Yeah, you know, it doesn't just affect their finance, it, it would, it could affect their, their family, their marriage, mental health. It's all sorts of problems. So when I see businesses suffer, I see people suffer. So as a minister, I do have that historical heart. So when I clap for local businesses, actually, really, I'm, I really care about the people. And, and apart from that, when I first visited Biddles, I came on a Wednesday afternoon. And guess what? I couldn't find anywhere to have lunch because all the shops were closed. Apparently you have a half-day. So I didn't know that. And so, and some of the shops, they don't accept card payment, cash only. So I thought this, you know, our, our town, it is a beautiful town, I'm very proud of the people, but I, I just felt a little bit out of out of touch with, with modern society in a way, coming from Nottingham and lived in, I lived in Birmingham and from China. I just thought maybe there's something we can improve to help our local business to, you know, to operate in a way that will suit this younger generation's needs. So that's one of my desires. I'm not saying this, that in a place that I want to be a saver or anything, but I do trust that we all have something to offer and we are all called to be the agents of change. So there is a possibility for, for us to work together and, and to do what we can in, in the transformation of our town. And, yeah, and secondly, I mentioned about culture. And that's, because I came from a Chinese cultural vibrant. And so I'm keen to build a cultural bridges in our town to celebrate diversity, foster mutual understanding and create new opportunities for connection and growth. And I'm deeply grateful for our, for our council, that you put up a wonderful Chinese New Year celebration this year. And we heard so many positive comments after that. And the only thing that I've heard that is slightly negative is that some people didn't, didn't know it was happening, otherwise they would have come.
Just a note of warning, the five minutes is concluded. So if you can, if you can draw to a conclusion, I'm glad if you're to go on. Got to be fair on both canyons.
Yeah, so my interest is to help develop our local business and to create a more modern, welcome, vibrant high street culture. And also to build, to build cultural bridges and to bring more culture to our local town. But I have no desire to globalize our town because I value the English culture here as well. And so it just introduced a different cultures, could be more educational and more interesting for our local community life.
Full stop. Thank you. Excellent. Have we got any points which we would like to raise for that? I think if anybody has got any points, just no repetition with, with other members, but it's not, I'm slick, Harvey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Janjan, for coming and presenting your testimony to us this evening. As you may be aware, there are two vacancies on the town council for the East Ward and the West Ward. Do you have any, you'd be happy to represent either side of the.
That is not a valid question to ask. It's not for you to make that decision, it's to have a debate on that decision.
I was, Mr Mayor, I was asking a question of the candidate, I was not asking.
Sorry, but that is, that is a procedural question, it's not for the candidate to answer. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Where's Nottingham?
Thank you very much for your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janjan.
Thank you.
I can tell you, yeah.
Should be before I said that.
She knows what she's, she's.
Okay. Gentlemen, I am aware of the temperature in this building. If you would like to take your jacket off, you, you most certainly can. Unfortunately, I'm pinned into my jacket, so I will continue to suffer.
Didn't realise we had to ask your permission, Mr Mayor. Didn't realise it was a golf club.
I was, I was just trying to be polite and just to encourage people before they do faint, to take care of one's personal welfare.
There's always a jump the gun anyway.
We're not, we're not at a rotary meeting now. John.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you very much. You have five minutes to make a presentation. I do have a timer. I'm not asleep to the second, and the alarm will go off, as I found out. I thought it was just for me, but it's quite loud. So what I'll do, if the alarm does go off, I'll cancel it, and then if you can draw a reasonable conclusion, then that will be fine. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Well, this is interesting.
Quite interesting one to do. Hello, my name's Alison McFosson. Lived in Biddles for enough for the last fourteen years. Uh, yeah, I worked away, studied away, live back in Biddles now. I was involved in community events, so I moved away and left Biddles for studying services. Went down to the South West for work, moved back to Biddles. Well, about ten years ago, when we moved back to Biddles, this was community events again. Became involved in things, quite contentious things such as the neighbour plan. During the neighbour plan, I chaired the infrastructure section of that, worked with the enterprise and commerce section of that, did lots of community consultation events, and became involved in a project, they said they wanted to create a community focal point to the town, effectively a town square. That ended up in an ACOM document in twenty eighteen. Looks like you're doing that finally now. That's an interesting project. Twenty nineteen, I was considered standing for the town council. Stud of the town council, served four years. In that time, I was involved on the finance committee with asset improvements, the country park business centre project, was involved in creating greater resources and better resources for our community. In planning, we carried out the neighbourhood plan, we claimed to protect green spaces in the town. Planted a ridiculous number of trees that someone's fault, who's certainly not far from here. And we managed to get the first Audi in the country, but which had a bus stop as part of its plan, which was quite impressive. The planners didn't appreciate that when we had those video calls in lockdown. He still achieves that. And then, town and community, yeah, I chaired town and community for four years. And chaired Christmas lights, organised, well, three of the four Christmas events, sadly one was curtailed by the pandemic. Helped certain individuals set a car show at one point, and put ridiculous numbers of bollards and cones out in the high street. And one way, the traffic direction signs. And environment, going back to that, involved in the environment committee, coming out of town community, again, or tree planting, or protecting the green spaces, protecting the environment. That also fed back into the neighbourhood plan, where we worked to safeguard green spaces in the town and protected, what, eighty spaces from being developed. Um, yeah, um, back in February of twenty twenty-two, we had a conversation in the town and community committee about setting up coffee mornings as part of the town, um, cost of living crisis. That became Biddles Works Together event. During that, those meetings, we identified how we can help with the cost of living in the community. We've borrowed twenty thousand pounds from the town council's reserves to set up a project in the community to help the community through that cost of living. So we started off the idea of a coffee morning. It became a series of events, pop-up groups throughout the town, chaired those meetings until May twenty twenty-three. We managed to finally get all the councillors to agree to that and pay for it, someone a bit reluctant, but they were strong on. And what started out as a small, simple project became a one of a type, type projects in the country at that time. It was unique, where we weren't looking for something, we couldn't find anything similar. And the important bit was, it wasn't the tea and the coffee and the food that we gave out. It was how we helped assign post people to essential services and support their retirements. It was helping people to find out what they were entitled to, encouraging them to seek help and safeguard, safeguarding them and signposting to community resources and government service their retirements. Their advocacy role was a hugely important part of that project. And, yeah, and since then, I've continued to do some various projects. And when I've not been involved in committed projects or anything else, I've been working at the university where I've worked on apprenticeship programmes. I've worked there for the last over three years, and I worked at apprenticeship programmes throughout the year. And, yeah, you've already known me, you're happy to work with me, and you know that I've worked with everyone in the past and have to work on any projects that come forward. So pretty much that's it. Thank you for listening. I'll do it for time.
Did very well. Thirty seconds to go, if you like. And no, have we got any questions, points we'd like to raise, anybody? Okay, if you could please leave, that would be. Yeah, brilliant. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Going to confidential now. Yes, I think just that's, that ends the presentations. We have got three candidates, like I say, one, one, I sent his apologies today, he's got the otherwise engaged. Yes, I think just that's that ends the presentations. We have got three candidates. Like I say, one one I sent his apologies today. He's got the otherwise engaged. And we will now go into confidential, which allows the town council to have a debate if required and then go to a vote. Thank you. Evening, everybody watching on YouTube and welcome back to this full-time council meeting of the Biddles Town Council. I'd just like to confirm to everybody watching on YouTube that the council has elected Reverend Case as the new town councillor for the vacancy of the Biddles West Ward. Thank you. So returning to the agenda. And we will now go through the minutes. So the first needs to go through is to approve and sign the minutes of town council meeting. Find them. So let's go through them. If there's any queries, present, attendance, participation, apologies, declarations of interest. Minutes of the previous meetings which we've assigned from the committees, mayor's correspondence, standing agenda items. Receive updates on outstanding bodies. To consider requests in relationship with the safety of lithium ion batteries. Receive an update on the get out and stay out fire campaign. To receive an update on the town hall frontage development. To confirm arrangements with regard to enhanced CCTV coverage on Station Road. Receive an update in relation to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund payments before the end of the financial year. To confirm the outcome of the advertisement for the councillor vacancy in the East Ward. To agree co-op opportunities should be advertised and the co-op for the town council vacancies should place should take place on the eighth of April. I'm just wondering, number ninety five, confirm out from the advertisement to council on vacancy of the East Ward? Did I say the West Ward as well, or was that previously advertised? Okay, that's right. To agree that a working group should be established to consider local government reorganization and evolution, this group will report directly to the town council. And we went through accounts and finance. And that excluded the meeting. So are we all happy to receive those minutes? Can I have a proposer, please? Councillor Jones, can I have a second, please? Councillor Garvey, thank you very much. All in favour? Show of hands. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. And just bear with me while I sign those minutes off. Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to receive the minutes of the recreation and amenities committee. So again, if we go through them, present, in attendance, apologies and approval of substitute members, declarations of interest. Minutes for the previous meeting, to receive an update on the Trent Valley Way footpath developments. To receive an update on the transforming the Trent Headwaters project. To receive an update on Staffordshire Morning Walking Festival. Jobs for the Leinsterman, which is a standard item. We had one confidential item. If we're happy with those minutes, can I have a proposer, please? Councillor Proudlove, can I have a second? Councillor Parks, can I have a show of hands, please, to accept those minutes? Again, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. The next set of minutes is to receive the minutes of the planning committee meeting. Proposed by Councillor Garvey, just can I have a second, please, if we're doing that? Councillor Hawley. Just going through them for accuracy, presence, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, minutes. Standing agenda items to consider any proposed sites for local listing, new planning application. And there were no supplementary applications, and new decisions and notices received from the district council. And appeals, and there were no appeals. So we've had a proposer, we've had a second. Can we have a show of hands to accept those minutes? Okay, I'll take that as unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is to receive the minutes of the town and community meeting. Proposed by Councillor Garvey, can I have a second, please? Seconded by Councillor Rethan. And again, going through those minutes, present, in attendance, apologies and approval of substitute members, declarations of interest. Minutes of the previous meeting, to receive an update on the chain reaction project. To receive an update on proposed tree planting activities. Receive an upgrade on the library of things. Provide a response to the district council management plans for Halls Road Recreation Ground and Biddles Valley Park. Receive an update on the urgent veterans event in Biddles. Receive an update on the town's mental health first aiders and agree the next steps. And to receive an update on a tourism town itinerary meeting attended with other town councils and Staffordshire Morning District Council. And to agree a course of action with regard to the ownership and insurance of the senate. So if we're happy with those minutes, can I have a show of hands for approval, please? Again, I can take that as unanimous. Thank you very much. And we have, next is the minutes of the finance strategy and management meeting.
Get to move those minutes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Proposed by Councillor Rogers, can I have a second, please?
I'll send them, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you. So let's just go through, present, in attendance, apologies and approval of substitute members, declarations of interest, minutes attached. Audits and accounts matters. Approve a deputy health and safety monitoring councillor. See the presentation on the current asset register and the management of assets. Receive an update on the county council's community health point review. To confirm that annual staff appraisals will commence at the start of April. To receive an update on the management of waste from April. And we reviewed a number of policies including CCTV, pay policy, drug and alcohol policy, harassment and bullying policy, sickness, absence and wellbeing policy, public participation in council meetings policy, annual leave and special leave policy, protocol tomorrow the death of a local holder of office. Flagline protocol, councillor email and IT usage guidance, councillor's handbook, terrorist policy, banning policy, all of which were agreed at the meeting. And standing standing agenda items which are listed. And we had a number of confidential items. We've had a proposer, we had a second. Can we have a show of hands to accept those minutes? Thank you very much. We can take that as unanimous. Final set of minutes which we've got to approve, it's a new set of minutes. It was mentioned and raised at the full town council minutes, and that is the local. Find it is the notes on the local government reorganization and devolution working group meeting held on the first of April two thousand and twenty five. And it's proposed by Councillor Garvey, that's seconded by Councillor Proudlove. Again, we go through those. Present, election of chair and deputy chair, declarations of interest, apologies. To agree the purpose of this group and conduct a general discussion and to agree items for the next agenda and to agree a meeting date for the next agenda. So they have been proposed, they have been seconded. If we can have a show of hands for accept those. And again, I consider that as unanimous. We are moving on to mayor's communication. And I have had a request from Councillor Plunder, who is the county councillor for Biddles South and Enden. He has expressed his gratitude to the residents of Biddles over the county term which he has just served. And he'd just like me to express his thanks for the support which is received. Moving on to other items which which are coming up. And as I don't know if anybody knows, but a couple of us around here are going on a cycle ride over the next few days from Biddles to London. So we have a launch event at Livestream Church, which has got a nice big car park, which is right next to the Biddles Valley Way. Tomorrow morning commencing at quarter past nine. Everybody is welcoming to attend. We've got a good attendance from the local schools. We have the town crier and we have Boomer and friends coming down from Port Vale, our special guests. And we've and wonderful Jody has printed out some fabulous stickers for the schoolchildren. So hopefully the the weather is set bare, the weather is set very good, to be honest. So we're looking forward to a to a nice, good, easy start and a very dry and cycleable canal topaz. And related to that, unfortunately, I won't be here to attend in person, is the start of the Chain Reaction event, which is going to coincide with the hopeful conclusion of the cycle challenge, which will be in Regent's Park at exactly one P M, because I'll adjust my speed accordingly. And that is going to be held on the Library Concourse just outside the library. It includes a festival of cycle ballet by the outside organisation. It includes a opportunity for people to have the bikes checked and recycling. I think there was a cycle giveaway, isn't there? Is that happening then or?
Not happening then, but we're collecting lots of information about the town, but the police are coming for bike marking.
Right, so the police coming, just to clarify, police coming for bike marking. There's a lot of information about events which are which are running, which which are running throughout the year, starting from that. So it is gratifying that a challenge which I started and expected to just trundle down to London on my own and catch the next train back has morphed into something which has got a degree of continuity into the next mayor's year with the with the chain reaction.
Chain it, agent.
And hopefully, hopefully, the idea is to encourage the use of cycling as a method of transport and a method of exercise and hopefully promote cycling as along the Biddles Valley Way as a safe route to school. So I'm very pleased to to announce that. And sorry.
Wish you luck, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And and finally, just just those, my civic ball, which really concludes the formal part of my year, is on the twenty fifth of April. So thank you for everybody who's bought tickets and I look forward to seeing you then. Thank you. So moving on, standing agenda items to receive an update of the management of town council assets, chief officer.
Thank you. The only thing I would just want to point you on at the moment is I'm keeping a watchful eye on the septic tank that's being installed at the visitor centre that's going in, started last week and this week. It looks to be a really good job. I understand that after it's been filtered and everything that's happened to it, the water that comes out of it is practically drinkable. Whether you would want to or not is another matter. It's a very, very modern technology and that will absolutely solve any of the issues that had happened around the visitor centre before. And then obviously our ambitions with regards to the visitor centre become a little bit easier to manage. And I think that probably do for now, that's all.
Just a slight clarification on that. It's strictly enough the septic tank, it is actually a micro sewage processing unit. So it's it's quite high tech. It's a significant investment by the district council. I have to say that because it's my portfolio. And but it is fundamentally important for the long-term use of the of the visitor centre. It makes the visitor centre far more sustainable going forward and therefore we've got opportunities to enhance and develop that, which we work on. Councillor Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Councillor Harper, because it was Councillor Harper's pushing that got this started. And it's languished for several several years, as you know. And I don't know whether you came in to post, I don't know, but all of a sudden it happened and if it was that, if it was you, well, well done as well. And it is a monster of a thing, hoping it will solve the problem. So well done all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. To receive an update on the health and safety activities, including risk assessment.
Yeah, so just to let you know that our health and safety advisor has been in last week and completed a fire risk assessment. And there are no significant issues there that were identified. Anything that we were already aware of is obviously on there again, but we will now share that with partners. And Councillor Harper has been in for a chat in his role as monitoring councillor for health and safety. So we've developed a way forward with that. And I've given more in-depth updates as regards that at the finance strategy management committee, that those two actions have taken place.
Okay, thank you. And to receive an update on the Biddles Works Together project.
Just another short one on that, if that's okay. So obviously, as weather gets nicer, a lot of the groups that we're providing free food and warm spaces are continuing to meet, but not necessarily with the option of free food. And so there's lots of things still going on across the town, but they're giving, quite a number of them give their volunteers a bit of a rest now, just so that they're not having to be there every week to serve food. So.
Thank you. We have got Councillor Salt followed by Councillor Jackson.
Just to update council, such a chapter that Sarah and I have written is to finish its proofread. So we've just got a copy of truth made and come on, it's going.
Excellent. Very good. Well done. Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, I'd just like to just say a little bit about about the group and what I find really pleasing. That through every meeting that we have, somebody around the table would say something like, oh, we could do with it. And somebody else around the table says, well, we've got that, we can do that for you. And it's the connections that all these the all these groups are actually making. And that's the beauty of that forum. And I just, you know, once again, and I do it every time, the volunteers that give up the time to come to that meeting and then give a heck of a lot more of their time running the projects that they do. They deserve nothing but the utmost recognition that this council could do because it's a really good group of people, a really good group of people.
Yes, thank you very much for that, Councillor Jackson. I certainly like to reiterate that. In fact, the individual community groups have come together to form a community group and then mutual assistance group themselves, and that is absolutely gratifying. And long may that continue. And I certainly know it's recognised and it's recognised the county now and further afield. So any any promotion which you do is absolutely, absolutely fantastic with that. Thank you for that. So moving on to receive an update on outside body meetings attended since the March two thousand and twenty five council meeting. Have we attended any meetings at all?
One, essentially, I think three.
No? Okay, so happy to move on. To receive an update on the town hall frontage development.
Just a very brief mobile update from me, if that's okay. So you'll, if you've had a look out through the window, you'll see it's all progressing very nicely. Don't want to jinx it. And obviously now we're going to have months and months of awful weather. But actually, the fabulous weather since the end of February, most maybe start of this project, a lot easier. And they're making good strides with that. And we've got a brief catch-up meeting at some point tomorrow when the architect does their kind of site visit. There's a couple of things to talk about in terms of what we do about trees on the frontage. You know, what we do about buying plants. There's some considerations for us, I think, as well. So we've got a notice board that says Biddles Mining Heritage. We haven't agreed the content of that notice board yet. I wonder whether it might be useful if, just on an ad hoc basis, we got together again and had our smaller working group to take forward some of these ideas. I don't necessarily think we all need to decide on planting or all need to decide on the wording of notice boards necessarily, but I think it might be just useful to kind of bounce those ideas around.
Okay, hopefully. Councillor Jackson, then Councillor Garvey, sorry.
A meeting in addition to the contractors meeting on the twenty second.
Yeah, that's the, sorry, that's the more formal one. They're just.
So when do you want this other meeting?
At your discretion. If you're happy to have it, a working group meeting.
I'll send the email out. Just on that, I think, I hope I sent an email to the town council, anybody get it with a photograph? Yeah, there was a photograph on Facebook. I don't know whether people, I've seen it or not seen it. It was actually the like the official opening of the of the wheel. George Luntres was on there and a couple of other people have been have been recognised. And I think it's a real piece of history for the town and I have asked if we can. And I have asked if we can get a photograph and perhaps stick it in round here somewhere at some point, whether that would be done. Now formally ask for that be done, if somebody would like to second that.
I'll second that.
Need by Councillor Harper, can we have a show of hands on that, accept that? Yes, okay, yeah. Okay, that's taken unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, um.
I'm sorry, I think we've got a better version of that. Or I think we've got a good version of that, because that was one that I think somebody had taken, there was lots of chatting going on. We've got a more formal version of it. There was one in the Chronicle, definitely, so. If you're happy with our version of it.
What I'm thinking, we're going to have an official opening.
Yeah.
Something like that on that opening day, I think would set in really, really, you know, the first and and the last. Hopefully it will not get moved, yeah.
Okay, moving on to uh, hang on to this, oh, grimes, I can't, sorry, I can't see for this sun. It was Councillor Garvey next, yes, and Councillor Hawley, no, Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The conscious, obviously, that the um the new frontage is definitely doesn't mining heritage specifically. But we've got a notice board on the mining heritage. Will we have notice boards or or no information boards on the other industrial heritage of the town, like the textile industry and any other aspects? And engineering, you know, we've got a board downstairs on the work and safety, which indicates some of the industrial history of the town outside mine. We know that they celebrate all of that as well.
But yeah, we've already agreed that, but it's for the bench down there, so that's um we're just awaiting delivery of of that. And so that draws attention to the importance of the mining heritage, but also celebrates the other aspects of the within the town and then kind of the process that we went through to develop the the mosaic bench. So yeah, that definitely highlights that.
Councillor Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to quickly say, I don't know if the bricks have arrived yet. Uh the 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 name the bricks, but we had a conversation, I can't much admit it, but we're talking about it. And we need bricks, the bricks, the bricks are going to need checking, sort of proofreading, if you like. Uh to make sure there's no spelling mistakes, no chips on the bricks. It's a serious thing, obviously, if you've got a loved one and you paid for a brick, you don't want to find that they've got, you know, it's just no, there's no Ian Jones or something. And so I I'm quite happy to volunteer to do that. And I think if we get offers of people doing it, it won't take that long. To find a venue to do it, so I'll just reiterate, again, I will do that. And while I'm on my feet, if we're having proper photographs made, can't remember proper photograph made of me there. But that's where I hold in that sled, I mean, that newspaper cutting has been stuck there for twelve years now, thirteen years. I think it's a bit sad, so we need to take it down and make a proper one. Just thought I'd say that while I was up.
I think it needs taking down, I don't rather the other.
It's away from the sled, John.
Right, okay, moving on. Nice, this comes.
The regeneration of the channel.
Uh Councillor Harper, I'm really struggling with the sun and Councillor Jones, he's done his best, but there's two slats missing.
It's a bit, it's a lot.
It keeps moving, the sun moves, you know.
Yes.
As the last town did, we've got.
Sarah's reply. Have we put into consideration the fact that we had a hospital here? It was a groundbreaking hospital at one time. When the children from Lancashire, and we've got a video of it on disc, get the video, it's on a disc. Of how the children came in, it's now been, it's now accounted now, it's a county council as well.
Yeah.
Um there was Sue Fletcher's husband who get got it to us all. So I think we should recognize the hospital as well.
I believe the chief officer has a response to that, which is quite positive.
Thank you very much.
Uh thank you. On on said board, uh which was one is where you pay shared prosperity fund. And we're just, as I say, we're just awaiting delivery. We talk about the importance of nursing as as regards the kind of previous industry, as it were with.
Thank you.
May I say, please, there's definitely a tile featuring a nurse, because it's one of the stars of that bit.
Yeah, Councillor Rogers, are you in the game?
Yeah, I'm not just talking about the front, you know, we've finished on that, but we've always said it'd be nice to do a time capsule in this town. There is one hidden away, you know, to update the time capsule and things like that, and possibly something to think about, that's all.
Would you in it, come on? Less relevance for some others than others.
Okay, so.
Are we happy to have a working group to discuss some of the
Yes.
curational issues with regards to frontage. I I don't necessarily think it's appropriate. I mean, I'm happy to make all these decisions on my own, but it is, it's your project, isn't it? So I I think probably content of notice boards and, you know, decisions about trees and that sort of stuff, it needs wider discussion.
Move, we set up a small working group that discusses what Sarah wants to do at the front.
Do we have a second to that?
Oh, second now.
Yes, I think the principle, I mean, we did, we did have a working group, but it's the staff, and I think it just it just reiterates that. So yes, as you, I say, if anybody expresses an interest to be on that working group.
If I give the date, possibly it'd be just after Easter, and then if you're available then, just let me know.
Yeah. Okay, lovely. So moving on, uh accounts and finance. Uh we're looking at exceptions expenditure over five hundred pounds. Expenditure less than five hundred pounds. Credit card expenditure, which seems to be less than five hundred, come on the way, and there's, is there any supplementary accounts?
Should be.
And supplementary accounts over five hundred pounds. And the expenditure less than five hundred pounds, yeah, expenditure on the credit cards. Councillor Rogers.
Yes, no aside on me, I've got a couple of links, lines on there, a little worker did a little job of it, thank you.
Okay, lovely. Councillor Garvey.
So take those all on block, um mayor.
Can we have a second for that? Councillor Hawley, and can we have a show of hands? Uh that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Oh, you are saying? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Apart from those who have declared an interest, there's otherwise unanimous. And to finance, and that that concludes. That concludes after nineteen twenty, my last formal meeting as town mayor. So thank you very much for your indulgence. I trust, I I trust I I improved up till March. I know today's gotten slightly pear-shaped, but it was a straight day. So thank you.
Hey, well, Mr.